I have enough depth.
Yeah, there's enough depth.
Golf is like help community. You know, people. And it's not just my force. You're sure. Just basically.
I've been saying.
I'm not the same person, but it's totally different. Actually, that surgery. My head right there is in my down on the side. And I hate it because it's like sports, it doesn't work. I know, but it's like what I see is community gets something at that park. The Harden Park is a tennis court.
Six and seven.
Or um, it's a tennis court. Definitely there's two.
I mean, a good two. Um.
Oh, okay.
I'm tired of Costco thing, I wanna make sure.
Three years. Sorry, I was over here.
Is it?
For. She can picture. Come on. It's me.
Last time we saw.
Remember I was there.
I don't wear shoes, right? Right? You got that before my dad.
Okay. That was just accidental.
Sure.
Oh, shit.
Actually, that's. Well, you don't have, you don't have. Justin.
Uh, this is it?
You got lost.
Hi. So.
Like, correction.
Yeah.
It's not just a zone and out. Before I know it.
Oh, the sprout. Oh. It's all I do is that. So whatever you hear, come back. And then I'm sitting there, kind of zoning out again. And then I'm running across the street. I'm pretty deep in the fifteen X.
I'm curious, yeah.
I'm not really good with.
Just so.
Think. Okay. Hey, back. How you doing? Get a paper.
Yeah, I would roll with. The one kind of shows a building in the street.
Oh.
Tennis is just.
I mean, it's my. What? I was just going to door talk. I missed the turn. I had a walk in the way here.
Coming here.
Yeah. Solid resident of the town.
Yeah.
Uh, seven thousand people.
Yeah, Rick. Larry, who we are. Gordy is not coming. It's Taylor's not coming. Deanna's not coming. I thought Rick would be here.
Hi. I'd like to say so. I think this one.
Okay.
Before.
I don't.
You're gonna wanna not sit there because of the PowerPoint. And the almost people, Jimmy, just sort of chairs, but it makes up your neck.
Brian has eyes on the back of his head.
Okay.
Eyes on the back of his head.
Okay. Is that as big as the font? Please don't laugh at me. Just one. Okay, sorry, yeah. I can hear my kids laughing at me.
Here, first some of the interest.
I need for the PowerPoint that's coming up, not just that, but like, I mean, but thank you.
Okay. All right, yep, the glasses, ready to roll. Park submission meeting workshop. We've got a couple things on the agenda tonight. Um, we're gonna start with the Casco Circle Park Listening Session. We had Lisa and I did this in late June, June twenty fifth or something like that. And it was a great turnout. I think I had a picture somewhere of everyone.
Twenty-two.
Yeah, so, uh, we had probably forty people and super engaged in it. And the, the purpose of it was just to simply listen. We hadn't really done this with this park forever, so we just had no agenda except to listen to see what the concerns are at the park. And it's something that, this lesson, listening sessions, my hope is that we're gonna do this as a series. Uh, we're actually, I'm actually planning, Josh and I have planned the next one for Antoine Park here in early October. And it's, that's another, uh, uh, great neighborhood park that I think will be some good, good energy, um, act. But no, you know, we have playground there, but no real, nothing really on the agenda for that park. Um, just wanna hear any concerns. So, uh, Lisa spent a lot of time on this and I appreciate you putting everything together for the meeting. And we wanted to kinda read out what we heard back and go from there.
Thank you, thanks, Brian. Thanks, Josh. So just before we get started, I just wanna say, um, I do appreciate the support and it was really nice to have you with me going into that. Cause I haven't, um, led a listening session before, not quite like that. I mean, I'm a social worker by training, so listening is kind of what I do. And I just like, you know, having been on parks just since the beginning of here, what I'd heard about Costco was that, um, it was a nature area that residents in general did not want, um, you know, changed, I guess for lack of a better word. It's like, okay, it's a nature park, we're not gonna change it. And it made me think, well, that's fair. And at the same time, just because something's designated as a natural area, um, doesn't necessarily mean that it shouldn't be without a look from the city as well as potential resources, even if there's not gonna be something built there. So it was kind of in that vein that I started looking into this a little bit more and thought, you know, maybe I will canvass the area. So, I don't know, several weeks before the end of June, I, um, Josh and I sent a printout, like two hundred door hangers. So I went all over Dunwoody and all the way up, um, Costco, uh, street there and all the way around the circle. And essentially hung one of those that are pretty housed, um, not knowing what the turnout was gonna be. Some people contacted me ahead of time and said, this is great. Other people said, no, thanks. Um, so when we got there that night, yeah, I'd say over the course of the evening, there were probably about forty people there, give or take. And some people came and went. So it was a good turnout, you know, statistically. So you can, um, go ahead and start here. And so, again, uh, I think it was important to define or is important to find what a listening session is, which is that it wasn't a presentation or isn't. It really is about what I did and what Brian and I set the tone for that night, which was sitting down, it was lawn chairs, it was a beautiful evening, and, um, welcoming residents and whoever else was in attendance and kind of saying, hey, um, sorry to disappoint, I don't have a presentation. This is really about, um, me having come with my research to open ended questions and just taking time to hear from residents, hear what they had to say. And setting aside a good time, set aside two hours, um, for this. And so it was welcoming residents, defining what a listening session is and, and ensuring that, that folks understood, um, that it wasn't bad time to solve problems or for me to answer questions. It was really kind of like, I'm a sponge, we both were, um, and that we're gonna be taking an information. So, um, residents were initially, some of them quite concerned and, um, and I was hearing things like, you know, what are you gonna do to our park? We love this place, it's, it's a natural place. There was some confusion about how the land was deeded. Um, and so we did start after the welcoming, kind of setting the tone for the session. Um, we started by a review of the deed, um, from December of seventy-one, um, which felt out, um, that no, um, buildings, permit structures, I don't have a copy of it here, it's on public record, but the condition of the land being deeded by the folks who did this back in the early seventies was that the land in perpetuity is to remain free from man-made structures, hardscape, even, um, installed benches, water fountains. None of that is happening at this location. Um, and that's in perpetuity. There was also misinformation, um, that folks had heard about the fact that there was a one hundred year, um, limit on that deed. And it's not the case. This is throughout time. So, um, I started the session actually by asking residents and, and they were so kind to allow this, if I, if it would be okay if I simply tape recorded it, which I did, um, simply because it's very hard when you're trying to receive information to take notes. And Brian, to be fair, you did an awesome job and you did capture a lot of it. And cause I wasn't sure that that was gonna work. And I was, I put myself on the tape saying fingers crossed, cause I haven't taped on an iPhone before. Um, the consensus of the group was that what, that was okay. And that was important for me, that people didn't feel that their privacy was, um, being disrespected in any way. So that was okay with the group. And then we went into the format and I explained that we'd be doing open ended questions. Um, so I researched a variety of topics and I kind of explained that the format would be me simply asking a question through and then taking as much time as was needed to kind of get the feedback, um, knowing that I would kind of keep my hands on the reins and not allow things, um, to spin too far off topic. Um, and everyone was so great about that. So I also explained, um, the difference between the private parks versus public works, et cetera, in the city. Because Costco is one of those situations, it's probably not unique in the city, where, um, we have a park, but we also have roadways, um, infrastructure, homes, all this other stuff. And, and there's a lot of concern in the area about, um, road traffic, we'll get into it. But I wanted to make sure that residents, residents understood, we were there to really talk about Costco Circle Park. The roads were part of it, but there was a disstation there and I wanted to stay in our lane. Um, at the same time, I told them I was happy to puzzle on information to other entities that could be helpful. Then I said at the end, um, we'll have time for questions that maybe I didn't address as well as any concerns. And we did finish an under two hours, which was awesome. So you can go to the next slide, Josh. Um, these were the topics that I had come up with, not knowing if they were gonna stick or not. The things that I either heard about the area, the residents had emailed me after I did the door hanger, or that I'd heard, um, or I'd read through many years of parks meetings, because this park didn't come up a lot, but things about mowing, et cetera, had come up before. So these were the areas of questions, um, still be addressed that night. So I'll get into kind of, um, you know, what we found, I just wanted to throw those up, up there. And just kind of that was, you know, that is the order that we did the listing session, um, just so you can see kind of how we went through those questions. So then you can, um, next slide. So, um, this slide is brain boarded in terms of what the residents thought. Um, and again, forgive me if you're listening or if this is going to be, um, seen by others. And if anyone, if I'm incorrect in any, please correct me, um, Costco Point residents, it's an awesome community. Um, this is what I'm hearing, this was what I heard from the session. And so I tried to brain board these in terms of what was, um, kind of top of mind, um, all the way down. So, so perfect. I, and I wasn't expecting to hear this. I thought we were there to talk about a park, which we did. But what came up loud and clear right away was resident safety, visitor's safety, community's safety. That area, um, I don't know for those of you who haven't been there, I haven't been there, um, much in the last number of years that I've lived here. Um, and it's not, do you start from regularly, did you realize how incredibly tight that is up there? You've gotta go all the way up to essentially this peninsula that then goes in a circle. And, um, what residents talked about a lot was medical emergencies, um, ambulance things, police calls. And the idea that, um, one woman said, you know, there was a medical emergency and because there was such tight parking, which we'll get into, this first responder truck, it wasn't a big fire truck, it was some type of, you know, smaller vehicle, couldn't get through. So that was like front and center. And I always think safety first, whether it's parks or anything else. That was to me, what I heard loud and clear was a fear for safety, a fear for somebody's second stroke, medical emergency. Um, that came up quite a lot. So again, not the pervy of the park, but something I said I would absolutely include in my notes in the session. One of the residents also offered that I did not know that this was a historic, and I don't know if it would still be the case in an airlift situation, that that park up there, the clearing of the, um, prairie area somewhere up there is where a helicopter has been able to land in the past or could if there needed to be an airlift. Cause I'll tell you, getting out of there in emergency would absolutely be scary. So that's a question mark. I put it up there because it had come up in the session. Um, so getting on to parking. And again, I thought I was there to discuss trees and nature trails and parking was like front and center an issue. I made it clear that that's not something that Parks Commission is going to be tackling, but because it came out in the session, I wanted to include it. Um, this is a situation where we have, again, this very tight situation. If you haven't been out there, you should drive it because what you have is parking that goes on on different sides of the street. Um, and also parking that goes up into the park boundaries. So if you wanted to show those, um, photos, Josh, I think it's the next slide. So, and maybe, um, it would be helpful, and I can speak to this and Josh also has a map, but there are these areas, like, let's say that, cause one of the cars there in the upper left, that is, correct me if I'm wrong, Josh, is that southwest?
Yes, yes.
Okay, southwest corner of the park. And that is, um, those are in park boundaries, while in the park boundaries, it's an area that has a lot of erosion because of the vehicles that have to pass as well as because this particular area is used as an overflow lot. And I didn't mean, I hopefully I didn't give any identifying, I was trying to give a picture. I'm not, there's no way trying to, um, shame anybody here. It's just that cars are there with regularly. If you drive up there, you will see vehicles, whether it's one, two, or three. Um, this is something that I see when I go there, this is something the residents said is an issue. If the folks who are doing this, like the listening session, will never know. I don't know, but I think it's a situation where it's residents, visitors, et cetera, who are doing this and that's a concern for residents.
Are they visiting the park or are they visiting residents?
I don't know the answer to that. What I'd say is, um, because it's happening every day and I'm not, when I walk the park and I see vehicles and I don't see people in the park, I have to figure.
There's a lot of construction.
Yeah.
Could be.
Yep.
Could be construction.
It's just, um, and you'll see if you go there on Saturday, there's no construction vehicles, there are those type of, um, I, they're not commercial vehicles. I mean, they're, um, they're vehicles that are owned by somebody, uh, you know, I don't know. The issue, the point is, what I'm hearing from the residents, either over email after the session or after the session, is that this is being, the parkland is being, it's a parking lot. Um, the lower left is, that would be on the, well, the east side of the park. Um, deep, deep, deep ruts. Um, this is an ongoing issue too, and this is in parkland, you'll see it when you walk there. Um, it's again, overflow parking or vehicles that are parked double. When people try to go around are very, very heavy construction trucks that are loaded up, it's causing a lot of, um, issues. I think after the road construction, there are events and stop, not sod, but seating done. And the residents say that's all this for not, because, um, the roads are constantly, um, this parkland is driven on. The other two, well, the one in the upper corner, um, with the cones is a situation, I took a few pictures like that. And I don't know if that's resident or city, but I think what we have here going on, on the east side of the park, is perhaps a resident saying, look, I'm gonna put up my own cones because my turf, my lawn, this, um, is being driven on. And so you'll see when you go up there, cones, tape, signage, saying, you know, whatnot. So the residents, this is a huge pinch point at Costco and it's an ongoing issue. Lower right is, um, on the north side, where there's a lot of construction staging. And I think, um, to be fair, some of the construction companies has absolutely tried to mitigate this with their subcontractors. And it's an ongoing issue. So you can go back to that, uh, previous slide, Josh. Um, so with regard to construction staging, um, this is an ongoing issue. And Josh, if you would, now just show that, that photo that came in today from our resident. Um, they were kind enough to send me something, send me something, cause I didn't, um, have a photo of the, what staging looks like. And staging in the park is essentially a situation where, um, vendors, et cetera, are using park land, um, particularly on the north side, but it's also been the south side to stage. Um, so you have, I've seen lumber or large, I don't know what they are, beams, this type of thing, um, being set into the park boundary as a place to kind of say, hey, these tiles or whatnot are gonna hang out here for a period of time until the subs are ready to install.
So, let me just interrupt real quick. I think that that's from someone's house and I think that that's their driveway to the right. Am I right? And then that's the neighbors to the left, that's their land is maybe under construction. And the park, then there's the road going left to right. And then the park is what's across the street? Is that what we want?
This is point, the park, you know, you, Josh, you can point it out. I think you know that area so well. You can point it out right there. Those vehicles up there in parkland.
Yeah. And that's Casco, uh, Circle Road going left to right, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
And does the city ever do any ticketing or asking the construction companies to vacate the property?
We do. I, I try to get there two, three times a week. And if I see traffic blocking, uh, the road, then I will ask contractors to move. If I can't find anyone, uh, we'll usually call the police and have them make a couple checks through the area.
So it's just a good visual. And again, that day or when they took this, um, there's vehicles up there. Like I said, I driven by, I was moving in the springtime and there was actual, um, product, large pallets of product, um, there. So, uh, and on the south side, there's been, it looked like landscaping product or tiles. So it's, it is an ongoing issue. Um, next, mowing and trails, we're, we're getting into parkland now. So this, um, kind of in order from importance to the bottom, is, is a huge, um, thing as well. And, and a really positive note, you know, um, residents absolutely love walking on these trails there. There are a number of kind of, I guess I'd call it meandering, um, trails that are mowed periodically. Josh, I think you said about once a month, about, um, and it's a wide path. So you have plenty of place to walk without getting into the taller grass. Um, trails, it was not a controversial topic. I think here is an issue where we have maybe differing points in terms of what is aesthetically pleasing. There are folks who think, oh, I'd like to see more mowing or more frequent mowing. And then maybe folks who are like, I don't know, I could see some of these areas giving even a little more, more natural. So it's getting into a bit of subjective stuff. What I would say is there's definitely a lot of places to walk up there with dogs, with kids, where you're not having to traipse through, you know, uh, waist-high grass. So I think the biggest issue with mowing and trails is that for a while, um, residents were convinced that there was somebody in their community who was secretly mowing. And then Josh, you know, spoilt, didn't spoil it, but he said, you know, actually it's the city that mows. But I will tell you that I have from that residence who said, yeah, they do go out there after the listening session. They said, I do go out sometimes. So there's a little bit of a working with the community there. And I think just communication is good about that.
You mean they all been mowing themselves?
Yes. I just think it's, um, it's one of these really interesting and special communities that they're so close knit and they really do look out for each other. And I think they've had arrangements over the years, kind of brand of dinner historically, where they've taken care of things. And, you know, it's probably not the first time the city's had those kind of things. Um, I think what I, my point is with mowing and trails is that communication is really important. And we'll get into that as we head down this list here. Um, but if the city's doing something, it just needs to be really well communicated to residents. Because it was clear, which is shocking to residents, didn't know who was mowing or even that the city didn't mow. So, and I think, Josh, you said it's a subcontractor does it, so it's not like there's no more on track.
No, not more on track.
So I think they probably thought, well, who is that with? So we did clarify, actually we didn't, uh, Brian. I told them, I said, I will not be answering questions so I don't get misinformation at that session. So to clarify, city does know about every month. And maybe there's some amended mowing with some of the new vehicles.
Is there anything that you do about maintenance?
Not that I saw. No. And in fact, a good question, because in fact, um, so somebody reached out to me after the mowing session, or mowing, listening session, about mowing, because they said, you know, we talked, it, it is a little tricky. You're at a session where it's all neighbors. And some people don't wanna stand in front of the neighbor, what they are thinking. So I always said, you know, hey, if anyone has anything to add, just go ahead and talk to me after the fact, which they have. And something that I'd say I felt is there's a bit of a pull again with the aesthetics there about mowing. People at the time, at the listening session, some of them said, hey, I feel that it would be okay to maybe have half the park more groomed, if you will, mowed. And another part, whatever part that may be, that may make sense, more of what I call that preserve look, more of that. Um, and it still is, to be fair, but I think historically, when the neighbors said, we used to mow part of it, we used to let part of it really kind of not be mowed. It's an open question. And I just think this community, like I said, they're so wonderful to work that, that I feel like these are kind of things that are gonna get felt out over time. Um, because there was also talk within the community of having some more events around things and we'll get into that. But it's a caring group of individuals that are very tight knit and wanna do the right thing for this park. That's very good. They're all very, um, invested and protective of it in a really great way. Um, that said, there are some issues in dumping is one of them, whether it be from visitors, residents, contractors, I don't know. But when I first walked it back in the late or early winter, I picked up quite a lot of garbage, um, enough to fill two bags. Um, just garbage, not, not organics. What we have at present, and I don't have photos, but we can all imagine all of those, like there are Christmas trees, um, decomposing in there. There's also bond clippings and it's not, we could say that it's okay to mow on and let the clippings lie because it's actually providing a good organic type of fertilizer. This isn't that, it's piles that are molding, so that's not what we need in the parks. Um, the residents at the listening session, and I'm not surprised about this, who's gonna say, hey, guess what? That's me putting that stuff in there. There was a lot of consensus that, you know, maybe if you're throwing some bushes in there once in a while, it's not too bad. But I think in general, I've had people reach out again saying, we're not okay with this. There was a question for the city about where can we dump organics? Where, where do we do that? Is the city gonna make it easy? Do we have to haul it to the city? And I said, those are all great questions. Um, so could we think of ways to maybe make, um, organics, um, recycling or hauling easier? Whether it be Christmas trees, um, there was a lot of this type of stuff, like, you know, if you're gonna hedge your bushes, larger pieces of trimming, just bundle that stuff, just dump there. So I think that's not what we wanna see more of over time, cause it's not meant to be there. So, um, on a separate, separate note, somebody reached out to me after the fact and said it's also happening a lot over by Frederick. And I, we don't need to get into that. Point is, and this resident said we've got the pollinators who are clearing paths onto wild areas or not parkland, I guess per se. Josh, you know better than I that they're dumping, they, whoever this is, is dumping again, or kind of like personal organic stuff that you're, they're kicking from their yards.
And that's been cleared and whenever we see that, we'll try and put up signage, temporary signage, deal it out in the cloud.
Yeah. And I, here's what I'd say, at the end of the day, it felt good because I do feel like that sense of accountability, that sense of community accountability was really clear that night. And you have folks looking around the room saying, we're addressing this issue now. We're all saying that we don't want this going on in this, um, area. So let's all choose different and try to make it easy on each other. Maybe somebody's in trailer and they say, hey, I'll come around, take your stuff to the organics place, whatever it is, we can work together on those things. Um, moving down, tree care, um, I believe Adams said they've done a tree survey at some point, but it's quite outdated.
It's maybe, it was done two or three years ago.
Okay. Not that outdated.
No, it's not that outdated.
We didn't get into that heavily and I didn't talk about that at the listening session. Cause again, I don't wanna hear from residents with what, what they're seeing. And what residents are saying is, don't do anything to the trees, box, owl, deer, they have it all. Um, and I think there was general agreement that those mature oaks, which are really the kind of the lifeblood of, um, the food chain, as it were, need to stay intact. So if there are issues with disease or things are really problematic, what can we do to amend that? Or, um, just gonna stave off any type of disease there? There was some difference of opinion on what we do when a tree is no longer healthy or when it falls. Obviously, safety being paramount, um, if there's a tree in danger of hurting somebody or something, it's gonna be felled. And I think the city's already doing that if residents call and you can agree about that. There was some question of, hey, some of us may feel that a felled tree doesn't look that great. Um, we'd like to see something maybe a little bit more manicured, et cetera. And other people saying, no, because that sense of what's decomposing there is what's actually feeding the health of the soil. Nobody seemed too bent out of shape, I guess I'd say about new German felled trees. It's more of a sense of if they're unsafe or falling across a path, they should be dealt with. Invasive, um, stuff like buckthorn, um, one lady said, she, she gave me a flyer from the eighties, cause people have lived there for so long, which is awesome. They know the park really well. But she's like, we used to do, um, buckthorn parties. And she's like, it doesn't sound fun, but we'd all get up on a weekend and go in there and do some of that management, um, of the invasive. There's a lot of it in there and I know, yes, it can provide some habitat, but yes, every berry has three seeds, which makes three new trees in it. And when birds and deer distribute that, we've got even more of an issue. So there was general, um, agreement that buckthorn management is important, um, for the health of the park. Um, things like crown veg and other things are also invasive species that are not good. One woman said Virginia creeper is in there and that's actually, um, that is a native species, but it can become aggressive. And there is a distinction to be made there. Um, invasive means it shouldn't be here, aggressive means it can grow a lot and maybe wanna manage it, but it's not something to be concerned with in terms of the ecology of the park. Um, so there is enthusiasm for buckthorn removal. I, it's always management, you're never gonna eradicate it. So before things get even more out of control, maybe, um, doing some more addressing. So before things get even more out of control, maybe doing some more addressing with some resources for that. In the past, there was a resident who had coordinated, they'd actually paid for it themselves, some money toward native species, native plantings in the park. And they got that going and they got them in there. Unfortunately, because of the communication issues with subcontractors and whatnot, nobody's fault, but the plantings got mowed over. So I think that's just kind of been on hold or there was no more, nothing happening there in the last five years. So there is absolutely interest. The people on Casco have incredible plantings and gardens, and there are a lot of green thumbs up there. So there is interest. I need two hands to count at least with individuals who are very interested in that type of project and resources for it. Understanding that, you know, I can't remember this funny saying, that the first year it's like you gotta do a lot. The second year it's like, okay. And the third year, those videos are gonna really be, not going to be too much. They're providing a ton habitat, appropriate habitat, appropriate food, and appropriate for the ecology of the area. One thing that we did talk about was, it gets into, this is not an ADA park. There's nothing, there are no paths that somebody who needs to use a wheelchair, et cetera, would be able to navigate. And that is what it is unfortunately in terms of a nature area. We did talk about the idea of for people who are not as able-bodied, for people who may have, the elderly may have a health condition, and there are people like that in this community. Is there a way to marry the idea of a welcoming park with something that's not gonna violate this deed? Meaning if, and I'm baking outside the box here, if there's a felled tree and we have all these woodworkers and wonderful people out there, does somebody make it into a log bench? Leave it where it is? Something for people to feel that they can rest on, that's ecologically appropriate and that is going to serve the public. So again, there's a lot of talk about, we don't want to bring things in. We don't want, and they said that's not gonna happen because of the deed, but it's a question mark.
Yeah, I think that's good. Can you, yeah, I think we need to wrap it up soon here. Can you just hit the last point about the sign?
Sure, could you, would you mind just going to slide six there? That's crown vetch, for anyone who's interested on the lower right, it looks really pretty, but it's invasive. The sign, I took two photos here because, and I don't know what to say. Josh, you probably know better than I about the sign with the pole on the right. I think residents have said it twenty, because they said after that listing session, the sign with the words on it is no longer there. And I said, I don't want to say about that. I took a picture of the pole. The sign, the park standard sign, Brian, this is something that came up because there's been a new standard for signage. The residents who'd asked about that, once I took a picture of the new standard, because I couldn't remember what it looked like that night. They asked us and I said, don't, I don't want to say something that's not right. So there is a new standard of signage. You can see it at Southern Beach, right? When there was installation, that's the new sign standard. No?
The sign itself is the standard, the height of it is not a standard.
The insulation was not seen.
No, no, not, no worries. It's just that it was made, I think it's recycled, there's some type of particle recycled plastics, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, we, a couple of years ago, we took this up as a commission and decided on a sign standard.
Yep.
And decided that we would, you know, over time, replace these signs as they become disrepair or whatever. And we haven't got to Casco Circle Park yet, the sign. We heard from the residents, they like the sign just the way it is.
It's, yeah.
Which is fine, it's not fallen down yet, so I think we're good.
We had some, Brian, well, I think Josh, we got some suggestions afterwards because of the history of Casco, so long, residences are great, that that sign has sentimental value. And it is fitting because of the way that this area looks. But there's a disrepair there, so the question is, can it be maintained, can it be fixed, et cetera? And that's an open question again. And promises for me, I just, we talked about the fact that there is a new standard and I'm not sure how it's gonna play out. I think there's one more slide.
And Josh can follow up with that.
Yep.
On the sign, if we need to repair it, take a hammer out there.
Okay. I, I just wanted to make a distinction here because of signage, and I think this is relevant here. It occurred to me, okay, this is very important and I, what I did promise is the residents that I tried to raise all the issues they drew, just me even though we emailed the fact. And somebody just emailed me the other day, again, about the signage, the distinction between what is a park and what is a preserve. This came up several times. There are several residents there who are suggesting the idea of, but again, this would require a new sign. Calling it Casco Park Preserve is what they recommended. Because if you wanna split hairs, parks are typically defined as places that are active uses. Meaning you can look, there are ballfields, trails, playgrounds, water features like splash pads. The activities are active. Preserves are defined more as undeveloped and with ecological value, purposes to protect, preserve wildlife habitat. Casco really does fit into that category better. We also have places like, we have them already, French Creek Reserve, Sagal Hill's Nature Area and Southern Nation's Natural Area. So we've got a lot in different.
The Preserve Commission?
What?
We can change it to Preserve Commission.
I guess so.
Preserve Commission.
Parks slash Preserve Commission. Anyway, that is the website description from Orinol. And you can see it in there. So it's neither here nor there. I think, again, it came to me from the residents and I'm passing along to you.
So they're asking that we change the sign or not?
This, again, if we're gonna, we're herding cats here. Because forty people represented, lots more neighbors there. So what I'd say is there was talk, because obviously this is never gonna be built on. There was talk of, yeah, let's make a distinction, call it a preserve. Does one or two people define the whole thing? No, but it's something that came up, and I said, I bring it up.
Is there a sponsor for the park currently?
A sponsor?
Yes. So all of our parks have the ability to have sponsors, many of them don't, forty percent.
Oh, adopt a park, adopt a park. No, nothing, not that I know of.
Interesting in all your communication, if like somebody has like constantly been there? Because it sounds like there's a lot of just community things happening, be it the construction, be it the dumping, whatever. Maybe somebody wants to be that active eyes and ears in the ground who lives right there? Yeah, might be helpful.
They all are eyes and ears in the ground. I mean, I've been getting emails left and right. And in terms of adopt a park, I think on public record, I think it typically says that on the website. I didn't see that. And you're not gonna see a sign posted because you can't have signs in the parks. So unlike other parks, we see adopted by, you're not gonna see that here because we can't build a structure here. I should also mention, and I apologize, I didn't say children and pets came up. No issues with teens, no issues with graffiti. One woman said, we used to have a big boulder here, remember that? She said, we used to have a big boulder, a big rock, and people would sit and climb on it, but that got some graffiti. And she's like, I don't wanna see a boulder again. And I said, fair enough, but teens are not a problem. There's not nefarious activity or issues at night. Children enjoy the park. There are some forts being built. Dogs are walked a lot. I think there's a lot of off-leash stuff there, but it doesn't seem to cause problems. Tick maintenance, I think is generally controlled with trails. You're not spraying there, right? Ready, no, yep. So that's kind of all I have. I know I've run all sort of, it's a lot of, it's a lot to digest. And I really want to give everyone a deep dive because the residents really deserve it. We haven't talked about this one, so.
Yeah, I appreciate your approach.
Yep, any questions?
If the residents would like to propose a Casco point, a hallway to help the parking, be it single-sided parking or something, it's a part of the plan, it should be. Who would, that would be, I don't know. But it'd be interesting to find that answer.
There are signs that say currently, no parking this side.
But they want to expand, like, I'm assuming a lot of their concerns is at the entrance, there's a lot of new construction, small driveways, so if people park on both sides, it can be a progress game to get back there.
Totally. And I think here's what I would also say. I've also heard from the subs, because here's what we have. We have construction companies who have been here to do the job, which is within them, and yourselves. And we have the project manager and the general manager, construction manager saying, I'm in just as bad a spot as you are. Okay, I'm getting calls from the city, the police have been called, residents don't like me. And we have the residents saying, you gotta, it's a mess and it just needs help. And I just think there's nobody to blame here. It's simply something that, can we have some creative solutions? Because this is boiling, it's kind of boiled over with folks getting ahold of me and just saying, would you please help? We've called. But it's sort of a Sisyphean situation here. You know, the rocks being rolled up and then we're doing it over again. And that said, this has been like this for perhaps a long time. I'm hearing about it now, so I'm bringing it forward, kind of try to get some new eyes or suggestions or whatnot. But because it's, it's, it is very frustrating. And I think the residents who are having health concerns, they are afraid that they won't get help in an emergency. And they live with that fear every day because it's, you know, happened. So that's just, you know, truly from a safety perspective, it would be great if there could be some type of fix. And I don't know what it is. So that's all I have. Thanks, Melissa.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Again, we'll try and take the model that you've developed here and try and roll it out to some other parks. So as you, you and your parks that you're assigned to, if we go to do a listing session, I think that'd be good. I'll just say that Antoine, I think is next. Taylor, Taylor's assigned to that one, you know, definitely that. I'll let you know how that goes to just more community engagement, so. All right, so Steph, update, Josh?
All right, too often I get in the same room, so I'll just give you an update on projects. We have Crystal Bay Playground. We started the demo of that site two weeks ago. We're removing all of the pea gravel. We'll be removing several pieces of the playground equipment and replacing with age-appropriate equipment. Some of it's being relocated so that we can do little pods that are age-specific. And changing from the pea gravel surface to an engineered wood fiber. We have concrete curving going in, end of this week, possibly next week. And then the playground equipment should fall right after. And we're hoping for middle to late September for completion. Still working on our golf course drainage project. We installed about a hundred and twenty-five linear feet of drainage. Doesn't sound like that much, but it is quite a bit, especially when you have golf balls being hit at you. But we just have a few more, we're gonna throw in a few catch bases. It's great in the winter, the drought year, so haven't been able to test it yet, but looking forward to it once it comes. Park sign, so we just talked about that. And so everyone knows, everyone's on the same page. Every year we pick three parks and we try and replace those signs, update as needed. So for next year, we have Liddier Beach, I believe, Crystal Bay is another one, and then Hackberry as well. So those, those three will get updated and that's just kind of built into our operating budget. So if there's ever a park that you're looking at that you want the sign replaced, please just talk to staff and we can work on that. And I think the idea with these signs is we're kind of looking for a consistent brand. If you go to our parks, there's a different sign for every single one. So I know not everyone loves the idea of a certain type of sign. But I also see it as helpful, you know, when you drive into Orinol, you know, hey, this is an Orinol park. So I do think branding is important. So yes, we do have the Sun Beach sign that needs to be lowered quite a bit. We can get a mower through right now, but that comes out a few.
Josh, I have a question. Is that, how do you do that? How is that sunk down there? What is the process for that?
We just use an auger.
Okay.
So I, I didn't, that was my fault, I didn't explain to the guys that we don't just go the auger depth and then leave the poles the full size. I didn't explain that we can cut them a little lower, so we will rectify that issue.
Will it be leveled out then, because it's not leveled?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we do have one more sign after this, Antoine, is getting a new sign as well. So that, that'll come later this fall. Lake access markers, we to date have gone through the Balder Park Road. That's the ice fishing entrance. We have that marked out, Stubbs Bay, Park Lane, Loma Linda, and Res Point Road. And then we also threw in, or replaced a few markers on Forest Lake Landing. So we should, it's just Jack and I right now, but we're kind of hoping to get some, one or two this week and then the rest the following.
So the Forest Lake Landing one, I know that previously they disappeared shortly thereafter.
Yes.
Presumably potentially by a resident. What will we do from this time, do you think?
It's concrete now.
Oh, okay.
A little tougher to do.
Okay.
Okay, the golf course, we're having a great year, the golf course. We started out with a really terrible April. April's compared to last year, we're about thirty thousand dollars behind. We just, it was very ragingly ill. We've erased that, that loss. We've had our rounds are up, which is amazing, we're losing an entire month. To see that rounds are up right now. Some trends that are really fun to watch right now, our youth rounds have almost doubled. So, and we're seeing a lot of families engaged as well. We've sold a lot of family memberships and they're being utilized. So we're seeing some exciting things there. Yeah, we are, for revenue, we're, we increased in almost every category except for rentals. It's just slightly lower than we were last year. And I think you can just chalk that up to a bad April.
Just had a question, with the youth, what, how much is an increase? And is this the first year you've ever seen a jump like that?
Yeah, I mean, I've looked back the last four years. This is the biggest increase we've seen. So we went from, I wanna say last year, we had about seven hundred youth rounds. And this year, we're close to eighteen hundred.
How, what accounts for that?
So a couple of things. Kim, our clubhouse manager, she's doing an excellent job. She's reaching out to a lot of schools, working with the different Minnesota PGA groups to try and get in as many, not just kids, but whoever wants to be introduced to golf. But yeah, she's really doing a great job reaching the youth and we're on board to break even more up next year. Yeah, I feel like we are hitting all our marks with the golf course, which is fun to see. We just need some cooperating weather right now. Looks like the weekend could be a little rainy. And then Steph, again, Kim, thrilled to have her on team. She's gonna be bringing on more leagues next year as well. So almost every, so Friday, Saturday, Sunday will be our only nights without league play. So we're bringing in different groups. We have a mixed, a couples league or a mixed league one night. We have two men's leagues, a women's league, and actually quite a few throughout the day. We're looking at even adding some morning leagues as well, so it's pretty fun. Additional staff, we're rehearsing just like everyone else is right now, so if you're looking for part-time work. And that is it for Park Sunday.
Good work. It's fun to hear the golf course firing up self here.
Yeah.
Golfer appreciation?
Yes, sorry. So that's something that we tried out last year and we kind of broadcasted to the whole Orinol community. And it was good, we brought in a lot of people, but not necessarily interested in golf. There's made a good introduction to the golf course. This year, we really wanted to focus on the customer, whether it's families that are bringing their kids in or just the regulars. So October first, we'll be having our golfer appreciation slash Oktoberfest event.
What is that? What do you do for that?
We're just focused on the golfer. We're gonna give them reduced rates for play, they'll have their carts. We're gonna have beverage vendors come in and do some fun things, be good about it.
Any food trucks or stuff like that or?
We won't do food trucks. We're working with a couple of the leagues. They will most likely bring in some brats and hot dogs and just grill and hand it out to everyone.
So that's something that people need to sign up for, register ahead of time or?
Yeah, we, if you wanna play golf, you'd have to book a tee time, whether online or just by phone. But if you just wanted to come and visit, you're more than welcome to.
And have a brat?
Yep.
Okay.
Any questions on park activities, anything that you're seeing up there?
No, I'll just say I visited a couple of the different parks recently and I thought the maintenance was really good. I mean, we walked, walked along a long bike with the dog. And I'd never been to that park, lived here for thirty years. And it was a beautiful park. And then I live across from the Sagal Hill Park and had been up there a couple of years. And if you haven't been up there, the wildflowers and meadow are gorgeous. So that, that really, hopefully it'll get used, but it really is nice, the trails are nice. It's a little confusing, I will just say, because you start down some trails and then you see the signs from some of the residents, you know. So, you know, the boundaries of the park are really unclear up there. But there's certainly plenty of. But there's certainly plenty of trails to walk. It's just a little, it's a little vague what the boundaries are.
You're not gonna get lost, 'cause I thought I was lost and then I got, I found my way back.
I got lost years ago out there.
They all connect.
There are a few borders that bring you off to different points.
I wish that, that some of the trails would take you down to the ravine better, because the ravine is such a beautiful part of that area. And, and you, you really lose the character of Sagi Hill when you don't recognize there's a ravine there. The trails don't really highlight that, so if there's some way to do that, I think that would be a nice addition somewhere down the line. Even if you walk along the, the edge of it, some way a trail that ran along the upper edge of it.
Alright, um, Kim's shirt updates. So we'll just kind of go, I guess, run the board. Who wants to start?
I don't have a ton. Uh, I've been doing a lot of pickleball, maybe reaching out, talking about that. Um, I would recommend the pickleball, say, for subcommittee breakout session afterwards. If you're interested in those. Bum Gordy was gonna be here since golf courses. Hot topic, but I'll have to connect with him online.
I was gonna bring up, um, the newly renamed Orno Herbst Legacy, a nonprofit that's kind of shifting committee guidance legacy to broader support. And just ask for the park commission's consideration of top priorities for fundraising partnership. And, um, so I'm, I'm not sure, you know, if that maybe is associated with, um, CIP, you know, kind of what's coming up from the one-year horizon to two-year horizon. Or if it's where the really big whale, whales that we know are gonna need substantial support and to kind of prioritize those. Because I think, you know, we're gonna announce a new mission at the full meeting and, and come, make that more of a public, formal public. Hey, here's this new mission and we wanna get public input on that. But maybe for the work session, if there are things that rise to the top, then, uh, that would be great. Because it's gonna be important that the group really align with public interests and, and adopt priorities and kind of express that in that way.
How many members are now formed up at that board?
We need more. Because we, yeah, I mean, some people stepped off, you know, when, when it converted to Looking Citywide. And, and then we had, um, one who came and then it was just not workable with their schedule. And, um, so we're really down to three and three.
So, okay.
I think it would be great to have in the neighborhood of six to, I would always say five to eight. Five to eight would be a good size and, um, yeah, and, and I think the, the group would benefit from, you know, kind of having that kind of stability. So that every meeting, I mean, quorum is all, it's just, you know, I mean, it's, it's really difficult. We need to find our group, which is part of why we wanna make a public bid, say, here, here is the newly adopted mission. And here, you know, here's some of the priorities of, the adaptive priorities of the park commission. This organization is really intended to support them, so, um...
So would it make sense to have some kind of article in the paper about the priorities? And therefore the people saying, hey, I'd love to be involved in that because those are things I'm interested in? I, I get where you're going, I get that connection between the two.
People just hear fundraising.
So I think the first, first steps is to try and nail down the, the goals. Then I think it's a little bit more tangible for people to wanna volunteer around those.
The, the, it's just like Big Island. I mean, it's so, it was so easy to find a support group to, to do a focused project. So Looking Citywide, it becomes a little bit more abstract. I think we need to define the priorities. You're absolutely right.
Well, and I think people don't understand, are you looking for a three-year term? Or at this stage, are you saying, you know, one year would be great because we could get some projects done?
Yeah.
And are you looking, even for people who might say, I'll commit for a year and go with this year's projects? Is that helpful?
I think we absolutely could do that. I mean, I've heard someone could come on and then resign at any time if they wanted to give a year. Um, we actually talked about terms and I think it's something, I think we would wanna actually even have more people at the table before we decide. If there's a, if there's a, if it's a two-year, if it's a one-year. But yeah, right now, I think we have a committed group of three. And we've done a lot of the, the, I guess, the work of just shifting the organization. And we've, we're now gonna work with, um, council to update, you know, all, everything with the state. And so I think just bringing, you, you know, we don't wanna speculate on what might be a good priority. We want to really ally the organization with, with adaptive priorities. So, I agree. That's, that's where we're gonna go.
So, um, let's work, you and I work together and try and figure out how, what the next steps are as far as setting those, getting the commission, input to set those and whatever.
Yeah, perfect.
Whether it's next month's meeting or the month after.
Yeah, and so next month, we would, we have a, we hope to have a minute to just announce the, you know, official update of permission.
Great, great.
Oh, Peter, great of parks. Do you think it'd be good at city councils while just, even a brother? Yes, uh, a little bit different, but message, but yeah.
Yeah.
Just, I have one question. Are there conditions on what the funds are gonna be spent on?
Uh, well, I mean, I, I suppose, as we're raising money, we would have to tell people it's for this. And so that, you know, it's really hard to raise money for operating costs for an organization. I think the majority, we would wanna have the program expenses, so actually supporting a specific project. And there could be people who really wanna give to the overall mission, but there could also be people who say, I'm giving to this bucket. And we're gonna have to be able to support those, I think.
Thanks.
Yeah.
There's nothing to do with trails, right?
I do, um...
I haven't talked to, we're employed.
I, 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 I know at the last meeting, the, or at the CIP meeting, it suggested maybe we look at lower cost opportunities for paint and ballers and to look at... And I was talking specifically on Shadywood and just noticed that there's like piping, they're getting ready to trench a pipe and I want to know what that is.
Is that for the bridge there?
I don't know. I don't know. There's like a big PVC pipe and it's lying along the edge of Shadywood near Navarre Town Center. I just was, wasn't sure.
I'll get it to you.
Okay. I mean, so they're tearing up that side of the road where the trail would go. I, I don't know if there's, if that's an opportunity. I don't know. Um, that's all, then that's all I have.
You know, unless we wanna add anything to the pickleball discussion that we're in it, you know, do a working session, I think we can cover it there.
Okay.
Okay, I'm done. I think you heard what I did say. That was dumb. I've been spending a lot of time on the Costco stuff. I'm just kind of drilling that one thought, so.
Good, great.
That's that.
I, I love that idea of listening sessions. I just wanted to, I didn't say earlier, but I would love to do one for Crystal Bay too.
Okay, yeah, that's another great opportunity. Let's get this, let's get the, this phase done of the playground.
The playground work, yeah.
I have to say, it was so, I was, um, I was surprised at how many people came. I don't know why I was surprised. It's in the late summer. It was a weekday. I would say timing matters with those kind of things and a lot of notice was given, um, and that helped too, I think. Um, and perhaps that community is very tight in and maybe not representative of where you're gonna find the member community. But it was, um, I think that really cemented the idea that there was, um, folks like us that were available. And I know you gave out your number to a bunch of people as well, and they were accessible for questions even after the fact, and, and people have reached out.
Since, yeah.
Yes, so I think it, it, it was really helpful for that reason, yeah.
Can I ask a question about, um, the sun park survey? It comes to response rate.
Uh, response rate has been great. Uh, we are on our second survey right now. I think our first survey, we had somewhere around two hundred responses. Our second one, let's see, we had an open house, uh, it was, uh, the seventeenth.
Next Saturday, the seventeenth, two to five.
Yep.
Open house number two.
And, uh, again, we're...
Concurrent enters the second, uh, survey going on.
We have, uh, to get that information out, we're posting signs throughout the city, different parks and trails. The signs do keep disappearing along East Long Lake Trail, so a few extras will be going out.
Oh, what commissioners will be up that, hosting that one? Did you?
I'll be there.
You'll be there, okay.
Victoria will be there. Um, yeah, so we've got, this, this, on my update, there's, uh, this, we've had, we had one open house a couple of weeks ago. Alisa was there. We had some good, um, good feedback. And we've got a second open house coming up. And then, um, and the subcommittee is meeting again in a couple of weeks. After the second open house, then we take back some of the feedback and start to, to understand how that, um, how that would translate into a master plan. Uh, we do have a third open house then that we're gonna have that's going to be much like the first two, but will also have the benefit of having some of the feedback incorporated into kind of a, a direction for the master plan. So, um, that's gonna be, that date has not been set for the open house three, but I think it was slotted for mid-October or something like that when we initially set the timeline for this, so.
So just a thought, and maybe it's just too far out on field, but do we ever use any of the social media vehicles like Nextdoor to convey information? And I bring this up only because I don't read a lot of the Nextdoor posts that show up in my email, but I note that there are conversations happening there about the Orno parks. And so it seemed like a place where putting out information would be a way of making that information more accessible in a way that people, like, people don't read newspapers, right? Not gonna go to the website. That information's almost gotta get pushed, right? So I don't know how broad it is. That's obviously more than Orno probably. But I'm just wondering if, if we use enough social media to raise public awareness and get factual information out there.
Talk about our, our new initiative?
Well, uh, no.
I wasn't asked to pick that up.
Uh, of course, we're slow to adopt new technology, uh, but, uh, there, Anna Carlson has kind of a new role in, uh, for communication. And that is, the first step really is what she's, what she's doing is the redoing the website. But, um, I think that that's also an scope is to start to use, and she is starting to use, not Nextdoor specifically, but, uh, Face, Facebook. We have, we have a Facebook website, we have a Twitter and Insta website, something like that. And so she's, she's not an expert to, at this. She doesn't have a ton of experience, but she's learning. And she's doing a great job of getting up to speed, getting, using those other avenues. Traditionally, I think the, the city is relied on, um, on the sur, listserv?
Listserv and newspaper.
And the newspaper. And so we have, the other thing that, um, she started is to, um, is to, uh, send out these need-to-know. I think, need-to-know is what we're calling them. Little, just blurbs about topics and a lot of them are gonna be around parks. Uh, just, hey, did you know that there was one that went out last week about Big Island? Did you know that Big Island has, you know, this many acres and it's, you know, you guys should go out and look at it. And it was, it's about this long and that's about it. It went out by listserv and then went out on the Facebook page and so forth. So more to come on it, but yes, I don't know the benefits.
I think it's good to monitor some of those things too, because you find out what communities are saying when there is misinformation out there. It's a great opportunity to think, hey, we could be more proactive, you know, about some of that stuff. Especially when we're talking about, you know, the park at Long Lake, you know, there's a fair bit of, you know, chatter out there about that right now. And I think it wouldn't hurt to, you know, be proactive.
Yeah, uh, Ne- Nextdoor, I don't know. I, I mean, this isn't, this isn't Adam kind of thing, but I'm speculating that, that Nextdoor is, it's a little bit different animal than, than Facebook. It has, you know, a different...
It's more of a discussion forum.
Discussion forum plus it, it's very localized. And there are very, there are several, you know, local, localities, I guess, for, um, Orno, but, so I don't know.
Have you ever pushed?
It's a good idea though. Getting the right information out is always better.
Is there, um, has, have, have there ever been information pushed tied to billing or anything like that? I mean, if you're communicating with residents and you're tying in, that's very complex. But you know what I'm saying? I think we're doing monthly billing now as opposed to quarterly for certain things, so that's an opportunity to push information.
Yeah, and that's, Anna is doing that, sending stuff out on the, um, in the monthly billing state, state council or whatever, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It's paper, but, yeah.
Hey, I don't know. Most people tend to look at their bills.
And the newsletter. The newsletter has information.
The newsletter.
Yeah, it's on the golf course.
Yeah, lots of different ones to do at Orno.
Uh, okay, so other updates here, um... Uh, Lerton, we have to, I guess I gave the update last time. There's some, some specific requests around Lerton and the dog park and so forth, and I think that we have some follow-up to do on that. We had a great, uh, pickleball, um, subcommittee meeting yesterday.
Sorry, I, what was the Lerton thing? I missed it. I wasn't at the last meeting. I apologize.
Uh, there is some, just, well, originally it started out some questions about the, the well and, but it turns out that that, that was a maintenance thing. Um, but there's a request about moving the fencing and if we could do that, um, and I don't think we can.
I can get it. Oh, okay.
You're going?
No, I, there was a request to put the dog barwell inside the fence. It's, um, code or something we're not able to, so like...
Right, that makes sense. Do people bring their, I actually walked that today. Now we have a dog. I've never, I just...
Where did you park? Where did you park?
I have a park issue. I don't have a pass, yeah.
That was the big time.
That was the biggest summer.
Oh, was it? Okay, yeah, I don't have a dog, so I don't have a pass to Lerton. I figured that a twenty-minute park to take a spin around Tamara Grove, which is pretty, I have not seen that before, those Tamara Grove. Um, parking was the biggest issue, meaning...
Parking's the biggest issue and they pay for a spot, so they pay for a pass, which is really the legal thing. I mean, it's under, it means, my, see if my memory is certainly correct, you have to buy a pass to be able to access the park.
Sure, right.
It's partly legal, so it's probably about, uh, signing waivers and liability. But it's also like making sure you're paying your fees and it's how you help the park. Uh, there are people who view this sign, they're just like, okay, I can't park in a parking lot. I can park on the street, now I don't have to pay the fees or not to do that. But then there's other people who are parking up top and don't have...
Right.
So we're just talking about the safety and how to make sure people are getting the passes to be able to have all the legal entities, but also the safety issue.
Yeah, so I think it's been a huge success and, uh, we, we certainly need to think about expanding the parking lot at some point. And the, the other thing related to that is there's more requests for additional, um, enforcement out there, so you're lucky. But we're saying, look, I, I will pay more than I'm currently paying right now because I love coming here and I want the ability, I, I want to be able to come here, be able to park. And I don't want, and I don't want other people who don't even pay the forty dollars to take my spot, so.
Well, we also talked about making the process of signing the waiver and doing that more accessible, kinda like you do in the Boundary Waters, where it's right there, you can pull it out and fill it out and drop it in the slot. So that at that moment, when you're, you know, coming into the park, you can do the right thing, which I think we believe that people for the most part were willing to do the right thing.
Right now, it's a mail into the city, get away from response, it's a little bit... So there's just some, some updating to do there, but like you said, it's been a huge success and these are good, good problems to have, you know?
It's a, I mean, they're actually using it today and, um, it, it's absolutely gorgeous.
Nice.
So anyways, yeah, so we want, I don't know, we don't really have much to do something. No, but I, I think a debrief of our subcommittee yesterday would be more than just what we heard, what we saw, that it went to the golf course, you know, which doesn't sign, so, but we'll have to check on that.
Yeah, so the, the next steps for the golf course were, this is the committee here. But the next step for the, for a pickleball at the golf course is to do a little, uh, to, to do some engineering work to figure out if the site is, is feasible or not, um.
I think we've learned a lot about the compatibility of ice skating, which we are in severe need of access for the kids in our community and, and pickleball. The two are very compatible in the same footprint, um, and a lot of the infrastructure there, um, makes it a way more affordable way to do it than starting with a brand-new site where we don't have any infrastructure in place. But, you know, it was really nice to hear from that skating community, their interest, and very importantly, um, their enthusiasm for being involved in the fundraising. And there were other people there who were also very interested and had ideas about fundraising. So I think there's a lot of, um, a lot of energy behind it. Um, I've been trying to, um, assemble a kind of email list of people from Orno who have expressed interest and wanna kind of stay in the loop, so we understand how big this community is. Um, so we kinda talked about a survey again, trying to find out among the households. Uh, and this is a very networked community of people because, um, they don't just play with their foursome. They all play with each other and they travel to different sites. This morning, I, I happened to be playing, um, in two courts, there were a twelve, there were sixteen people trying to use two courts, not in Orno. Um, so a lot of people sitting around and I know that at the same time, there were three nets up at the high school in Mound. These are primarily Orno people who are going to these other two sites to try to find someplace to play outdoors. Uh, so I will just say, as they become aware of my involvement here, you know, I'm getting a lot of questions. People expressing a lot of interest wanting to know, you know, where the progress is on that. So I think it is really important that we get that survey out to understand kind of the scope of those people and, and how many there are. Uh, we know, I, I learned recently that it is actually a part of the, um, academics at Orno now for kids, pickleball. So, you know, there really aren't resources for that outdoors, um, within the community. So I think it's gonna continue to face us, we're gonna have to address it. Um, Josh, I think you mentioned that our original recommendation, which you might not have, um, known about because we weren't at that last meeting, was to consider Casco Point because there's already an ice rink there. Come to find out that that's actually a more expensive because of the water, the wetlands surrounding that. So, um, the Orno Golf Course becomes a, a, a much more viable option in terms of cost and preventing kind of that impact on the natural area that's at Casco. So it, it continues to come back to being, um, kind of the, the preferred location. We did look at it and in terms of, of noise, it's, it's so distant from any housing. It kind of sits down a little bit, so it seems like it's got a lot of natural protection in terms of the noise. So there's a lot, there were a lot of things that I didn't realize until we got together, both in terms of the skating, what they're looking for, um, but the community continues to show a lot of both interest and excitement about it.
Even, you know, it was interesting to pull hockey there as well. It was interesting for, um, for John to mention that they were donated a, a Zamboni, which they would be able to store at Casco, but if there was a facility there, but they can store it, they would be, I wouldn't say he was donating it to the city, but it sounds like, you know, he would Zamboni the rink, which is just another amenity, which, uh, was really nice too. But getting all these people in the same room was great.
Yeah, it was actually interesting, we had two pickleball instructors there. So we really felt like we were hearing the practical realities of, you know, do we need tall fences? No, we don't need tall fences, you know, do. So we, I think we, we had a better idea of the scope so that the engineering work that can give us a better estimate of what it would cost, um, has more detail around it now than I think what we had before and takes into account that overlap between the skating and the pickleball. Um, so it really would have year-round use.
Yeah, so it was good, it's, it's very early in the process.
Very early.
Where, you know, we have to go through the steps to see if it's even, even an option. And we also, at the same time, we talked about, um, ways to reach out to the, the community and the neighborhood and so forth to make sure that they're involved in this and include, and the golfer community as well, um, and that's.
Josh is a golfer.
Yeah, he wrote the, uh, some of the.
Billy's still over. He lost her, but.
And as, as Elisa was saying some things, um, earlier about the footprint and some concerns about that. Um, you know, I would love to see us eliminate a tennis court and do this instead, because tennis courts aren't being used. This is the kind of facility that's literally going to have hundreds and hundreds of community members and probably daily use year-round, quite literally. Whereas the tennis courts are a lot of asphalt and they just don't get used. They're being used by the pickleball community and then when they're gone, they're empty and it's surface. We don't have any hard surface tennis courts.
Well, we have all, like, the athletic, all of us across the street. And those are some of the questions, um, that I feel did, um, from folks, and I'm no pickleball expert, but we've all had to become fairly ball-first because we go on the community. And we're in the Casco session, people are asking about ice skating, you know what I mean? And those things come up, I'm like, we all have to kind of learn about all these things. But some of the, um, questions I've had are around hardscape. And again, and I've said it before, um, what I, my, one of my goals is to try to minimize, um, creating situations that we have to care for. Expense-wise, maintenance-wise, this is a lot. And also trying to think smart about how we can already utilize things that are set up for hardscape, which golf course is not, so, um, and in some communities, people play pickleball, um, they repurpose, um, parking areas and they have, you know, parking during the week, pickleball on the weekends or whatever it is.
Pickleball though is a seven-day week.
Absolutely.
I mean, it's, it's not really viable overlap, because we talked about that, remember, we, when we were in Orno, we talked about using the high school parking lots. Um, it's, yeah, it's.
There's a fire, I think, and I don't know if this is even the right time, but I just, I feel like I'm late in the game a little just because I missed that next meeting last time where, where it was discussed anymore. And we can certainly, um, talk about more, but I do have input. I didn't come with anything, you know, to talk specifically about that tonight. But it's the hardscape issue, also the idea of the destination issue for a city of eight thousand to have folks from all over converging on the golf course. Um, it is, um, and I do live over there, like I just said, and, um, it is a place that is used year-round for different purposes, but it also is very much an open space, especially in winter, even in summer, it is a fairly quiet place. Um, and pickleball, um, you know, is definitely something where you want it to be social because it is. You wanna attract people because that's the whole point. So I do have students' concerns around that. I also didn't, I mean, hear the full discussion on other areas such as, um, the area by the donation garden, um, behind the, um, firehouse area up there. I feel like I missed some beats from when we were kind of looking at.
I have a lot of chat, yeah.
You know, the four or five viable options and, and now we're coming to this, so I'm like, I'm, I'm playing a bit of catch-up, so forgive me with the questions.
Yeah, there were a variety of sites that did get reviewed. I suspect they will each incur additional costs. I think the draw to the golf course was the existing infrastructure that we weren't, you know, adding additional, um, parking, for example. You're, you're utilizing the existing parking surfaces, whereas in any of those others, we're adding, to your point, that hardcover.
Yeah.
You're adding parking, which is, which is a significant part of the hardcover, way more significant than the footprint of the pickleball courts themselves.
And how many, Sandy, I'm sorry to interrupt, but how many pickleball courts were, were being proposed, six or eight?
Uh, well, the idea is that if you use the rink, whatever fits inside the rink, so.
If you have a Casco or you're doing that?
Uh, well, yeah.
When you say a rink.
Dual-use, we're talking about a dual-use center.
A dual-use.
Okay, I'm.
Yeah, oh yeah, so the idea is that the, the outer, the outer boundary of an ice rink, you know, like when you think of a hockey rink.
Yeah.
You can put pickleball courts inside of that. And so in the summer, fall, right, that's pickleball, in the winter, it's skating. Um, and that's what we were talking about when we had this meeting earlier this week, that they're very compatible.
Yeah.
Um, and actually, Wayzata Country Club, I understand floods their tennis courts every year and uses them for ice skating. So there, there are communities that are doing this and there's quite a bit on the internet about it as well.
I think there's just such huge questions of the, it's for certainly expense, but also community, um, response, like we talked about. And it's interesting because, um, there was a gentleman, um, talked to me at Casco saying, I don't even know if we have this rink here because he said all these people on the lake have their own rinks on the lake, so he's like, can throw a hundred of them and use the rink. And I said, I think there's a lot to use hockey, perhaps, that's using that Casco rink. But I just, I guess I wanna take a step back and really come in with some, um, good questions and ensure that we're not creating a situation of maybe recreating to the point that this is something that's going to become outbound, you know, financially, maintenance-wise, maintenance costs are huge. And just, you know, really kind of take a step back and again, I miss meetings, so I apologize. I just think it's important to just take it.
Yeah, I think there, the, there is a feasibility to the end, right?
Uh, no, so we will be taking that to see.
Okay, okay. Okay, okay. I mean, I, I will say there was strong support, um, for that destination as, as the place for a number of reasons, just because, because there is the opportunity to utilize existing infrastructure instead of build new. And also things like, you know, if there, if, if there was merchandising, you could buy paddles, you could go into the, um, pro shop and, you know, buy equipment or if there's gonna be, you know, any other merchandise associated with the sport, you know, that you would have that there.
Yeah, dress shirts as well. Huge synergies between golf and pickleball and, and then sledding and, uh, ice skating and.
Yeah, yeah.
Cross-country skiing and then.
Vendors.
You know, we're talking at the same time about improvements to the kitchen, and so this all kind of feeds each other, but.
And I think there's a lot of, um, constituency in our community that's currently going to other communities. And they've said, it would be so nice if we didn't have to go to another community to try to get a spot if we had our own. And so this would be that place primarily, and, and maybe it would attract others, but I think there's a huge constituency based on the numerous meetings where a lot of people have shown up and been asking for this.
Yeah, when you look at the people from Orno who are playing at West Tonka, they're playing at Thor Thompson, they're playing at Swenson, they're playing at Delano, they're going down to Lone Lake. It's probably a good, you know, fifty to seventy people from our community, just that I'm associated with, who are traveling out of the community. Um, but I, I think you make a good point about cost and, uh, the Hockey Association is prepared to do fundraising campaigns to support it. And I, I feel like within this particular community, that's gonna be a, a pretty easy thing to do in terms of fundraising.
Yeah.
Um, several people have offered to put together ideas for fundraising. So I do think that that's an important part of the budget, is, is knowing that the community is committed, really wants it and that they're invested enough to be involved in the fundraising. So I wouldn't see it all coming from.
I'm glad. Opportunities as well.
And granted, it's just right.
And granted, thank you for that.
So, uh, yeah, so these guys have been doing a great job running with the ball. If you guys, either of you.
You've got a lot of running with pickleball, by the way.
Run, running with the pickleball.
Yeah.
So if either of you have any, you know, questions or input or whatever, want you to ask them, but they're, they're running quickly with the, with the pickleball to try and pull together a proposal because the pickleball community is also very anxious.
Yeah, I think, didn't we have maybe thirty people at the last council meeting who came from that community? I mean, they're, my point is they're, they're like voting with their feet, they're showing up.
Yes.
You know, they're not just saying, hey, can you give me an update? I was trying to update an email list and I just said, hey, pickleball update, looking to create an email list. And I think within three hours, the majority had already replied. So they're, they're looking for, um, progress.
And, and most are Orno residents.
Oh, oh yeah, no, yeah, the people that I'm talking about responding were the Orno residents. Because I said, let me know if you are an Orno resident. I wanna make sure that it's that constituent group that we're communicating with. Not that others can't know about it, but, but these are the people who need to be invested in it.
Sure.
Um, and, and I would say there's probably fifty to seventy people on that list.
Yeah, it's amazing, I'm, I know, because we were just saying, like, in the past, it was even very, very complex and it is a very active community like hockey. And when, um, folks were dialed in like that, when it gets them done, they're gonna do it. I just have, I just have other questions, I mean, we can connect, doesn't have to be here and just get some of these other things answered, because, um.
Were even the good questions for the survey, that we're gonna look at that up, but.
Yeah, but here's what I'd say, I've uncovered things, and again, this is all new to doing these listings. I've uncovered the fact that you can have what I'll call a vocal group, whether it be pickleball, I don't know, sailing, it doesn't matter, whatever the recreational sport or activity is, bird watching, fishing, that is well organized, that is communicated, that is held. And what I've also learned is that you have folks who do not come to meetings, do not read city, um, they're not on Granicus, they're not looking at milks, they're gonna find out about something once it's well down the road. And I think we've learned a few things over the last number of years with regard to figuring in on something without engagement, so.
Yeah, that's.
Again, my, my question.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
We're going to, and I don't know, the plan is the plan to present something to council regarding, um, feasibility study without having done a meeting?
Well, I, to be fair, I believe they have been doing the engagement.
With the whole of Orno, all eight thousand.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think we're talking about a lot of money that we need to include all the, you know, but there was, you know, certainly, certainly is a concern, is something that we need to, you know, is in the plan right now. But we, we don't have anything to really get.
Reaction to.
Get reaction to without.
And that was the concern, because if the golf course proves to not be viable, because remember, we first said Casco Point was a good option. And then we found out not really viable, so it would have, to have engaged that community would have created disruption when it wasn't viable. So at this stage, it's understanding, number one, viability and number two, cost. Because then we can go out in an informed way that says, what is your interest in this? Is the community in support of this? Because as you point out, and we said when we looked at the, the whole range of parks, every park we looked at is viable. Costs will vary, many of them because they're such open spaces that haven't been planned at all.
Yeah.
Need master's plans that are gonna take two or three years, right? So we're, what we were looking to do was create something that was viable to address the need, maximize use of existing infrastructure so that we minimize cost and accommodate this ongoing request from this, you know, the ice skating community for resource, knowing that they're willing to support the fundraising. And that's why that site became sort of the natural kind of hand-in-glove, not because it was the only viable site. We were very clear about that when we discussed it at the council meeting.
Yeah, you've definitely done a lot of delusions in terms of looking, I remember some of the maps of all the different places you looked at. When you say the skating community, do you mean hockey or do you mean residents who skate a culture?
Both, it would be both.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know that a lot, we'll get a lot of money from just person off, off the street who skates, but there's a lot of, you know, interested people in the hockey association.
I know, ice time is huge. I just questioned again, we've got a rink with Orno, we do a rink at Casco, which is gonna be used even more heavily, everybody uses hockey. Um, so just trying to, and again, I remember when the AC went up over there, the idea was to be a community center. The idea was to draw in elderly people, the idea was to draw in citizens, which is why a lot of people gave money to it, who maybe don't even have kids at school, so I'm just still learning, still learning about.
That place will be hopping with skaters, even if there's no, there's zero hockey association there. I mean, it's hopping with, with sledding right now, you know that.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, again, I'm just thinking about large facilities costing lots of money within two miles of each other essentially, both. This is a resource for Orno skating over here with the school and then also the AC. Again, with pickleball, they must play it there as part of the curriculum. Um, I haven't seen a court set up, is it not something, again, hate to back up, that, that folks can be using all the time?
The school, you mean?
The school slash hardscape at the school.
The school has converted a few tennis courts and paid lines on them, but it's not really a pickleball court.
Well, what's fair to say is that whether it's Orno or Mount West Tonka or Hopkins or any of them, none of the varsity teams are willing to sh-. none of the varsity teams are willing to share the courts with ha, with pickleball. And the varsity courts are varsity courts, so, and because they're not in our purview, it's just, it's, it's not a viable piece. Um, so generally, the limitation is, you know, two to four courts. And you've got, you know, like I said, there are, there are many more people out playing than you can accommodate with two to four courts.
I think I saw these at Harden Park in Long Lake, um, but there are older courts out of your tents. And I do see folks over there, and they're waiting, they, they have two courts there, and there are folks on the bench.
Yeah.
Folks switching out, they are playing pickleball over there. And just, you know, we, we spend enough time.
Yeah, anyways, I mean, I, I just think it's a, it's awesome, like, in my, in my tenure as, on Parks Commissioners in various places, it is fun to have this support that just came organically to us and said, we want this. And it just seems to be, you know, a lot of people that, that are interested in this. And it's fun to, to be able to say, I think we might be able to do something really cool here for you guys, so.
You know, it'd be great, you know, to, to look at that both ways. If, you know, if you want to come to like Swenson some morning, come to the West Tonka Activity Center some morning, come to Orono, talk to that pickleball community and express your concerns so that, so that they are sensitized to that and they can speak to it. Because, you know, they're all taxpayers, right? They all need to understand, and one of the things I've said to people, I said, you know, this isn't a sledding. There are, there, there is a, a strong community in Orono that really loves the open space and the natural feel of Orono. There's also a lot of families, and, you know, when I think about the, the amount of, of community engagement that pickleball is creating, that, I, I, in fact, I asked a group this morning, I said, if you weren't here this morning, where would you be? Where would you be? You know, what would you be doing instead? I suppose I'd be reading a book, you know, more passive type things. And so I, that's the thing that fuels me in terms of wanting to make sure that as a community, um, because that's the fastest growing segment of our community is older adults. So I think we need to keep them in mind as we think about parks. Um, because, you know, th, they, they are hooked, and they're not hooked because of pickleball. They're hooked because it's a, it's a drawing of people together to meet each other and, and it, and it translates into other activities they do with each other. So I think that's why it's so, it's so strong and they have such a strong, yeah. It, it's because they're, they've never had anything like it in their experience, in their community. And tha, and that's why I think we really need to have an answer for them.
Yeah.
Whatever that might be.
I'm a hundred percent there. I think um, I'm a hundred percent into the idea of, I mean, I've said it before and again, and we talked about the community listening session, about community, about listening to the community, of when you neighbors together, having discussions, spending time together, not on phones and devices, but playing recreation sports, taking walks, burning, whatever you like to do. And it's obvious that pickleball is a huge draw. I think, um, I guess what I'd say, if I could wave my magic wand, it would be that the pickleball community, which hopefully gets even more people interested um, over time, is one that is um, welcomed and loved and we're all supportive of it as opposed to anything happening where it becomes something that's distancing the community or creating any type of rift with folks. We don't want to support that or don't want to see loss of um, open space or loss of fields that we could repurpose hardscape. So this isn't just Elisa saying it, it's all the feedback that I get as a commissioner or that I've heard from people at Costco about the idea of preservation of why people moved to Orono. And what I hear over and over again is that it's the old growth trees, the open space, the lakes, the clean air, and recreation. It's just how can we figure out a way to get um, these communities on board, you know, with an answer that really doesn't leave somebody feeling like, I've lost that, that, that vow to keep this area open. Do you know what I'm saying? Because it's, it's a complex issue. I think the idea of engaging people as they get older, um, and, because we all are, at least, but none of us are going back in time. We're all coming to places where we want community as we age, and we want to stay where we're at, but we want to grow and, and find new relationships and all that stuff. And I think it's all valid, I'm a hundred percent.
And if, if you can identify some of those other potential sites, that would, that would help bring new ideas to the group.
Yeah.
I think we have to finish the feasibility to understand, and having looked at the site, there's already a fair bit of hard cover, right? Because you already got parking lots, you already got a building on that site, you got gravel on that site, not a lot of trees on that site. So um, I think it's worthy of the assessment.
Yeah.
And then, you know, and then we see if there's a better option.
It's a recreation site, so there's a little synergy there. You know, it is a place where people go to recreate and versus, I think, the, the initial top choice was Costco Point, which was raised up by the skating community, but I think that's different. It's, you know, can we really impact that site by putting something like this here? Whereas on this site, it's kind of already being used for recreation and already got parking. It just makes a little more sense, so, yeah, I mean, if there are other sites.
But yeah, if we can find a better site, let's identify it.
Are we having to couple these two now, or can we decouple more ice time from pickleball?
The reason they work coupled was in fundraising, well, one of the reasons.
I just think we don't want to be driven by, because I would say parks in general has been, been taken through the wringer by feeling, you know, that's the perception sometimes that parks are somehow beholden to special interests or chasing the dollars. So I just think it's important to recognize that maybe we're not going to do something just because there's interest and money, but that we're really making sure it's something that's going to be good for our community now and way into the future. I think that's my biggest concern, because we're always going to have more skate and ice time and that type of thing. But I'm telling you, if you start listing the public, there's lots of people that maybe don't want more um, of those types of activities. That are, we talked about passive and active, there's just a lot of people.
And the survey will help with that, right? Getting that survey out there and saying, hey, you know, what are the demographics of your family or your housing, your unit?
Yeah.
Um, you know, do any of them play pickleball? You know, do any of them skate or play hockey? Are, are, you know, how do you feel about, you know, something? And that, that's going to answer the question, right? Because that survey will go far and wide. There's only eight thousand people in the community, so it's not hard to get, you know, a representative sample. So I think that's one of the, the earliest things we need to do.
Yeah.
And Josh has already talked about how we can make that happen. And, you know, I absolutely agree, you know, how do you balance whether it's just a loud voice or if it's as big as it appears to be? Um, and that's the key, it's finding out that support.
You bring up special interests, I don't consider the youth association with special interests, especially when most of them, they're all residents or can have your residence, but anyways, so.
I don't, I didn't mean to say special interests, but I'd say as a group of folks, because we all know them, and we have kids here in school or, you know, fundraising for things, I think it's important because there's still community, but that the community is supporting whatever that interest is, whether it's.
Absolutely.
So it's not, what I don't mean to say is that special interest coming from somewhere outside of Orono, that whatever the recreational activity or the interest is, that it's something.
Yeah, we're not going to do anything that the community does have support here.
Yeah, that's all, yeah, it's a.
It is interesting, and a hockey club said, we would take as much ice time as we possibly provide in this community. There's just not enough.
And I think that's just my concern, that not all people play hockey. And whether it's Costco rink or um, again, the Orono ice rink here, or we can build one at the golf course wherever else, will it ever be enough, you know, so I just think it's important to.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're hearing really grassroots requests from two recreational communities saying,
Yeah.
we, there's not enough capacity. And so, and this falls within our parameters of things to solve. And, and so I think doing due diligence and I think everybody wants to have real solid public engagement.
Well, you know what's great about Orono? Because I'm brand new to this, right? I mean, I didn't even know of Orono Parks, and I've lived here for thirty years, right? Um, but when I go up to the uh, Big Island Park, and when I went to, I can't remember even the name, Sherman, is it? What is the name of the one in Long Lake?
Summit.
Summit, Summit, and I went up there, and then of course I went up to Side Hill, and I'm like, this group in terms of open space, and not only creating open spaces that people can use, but making them accessible? You, you can tell it's the dominant um, priority of this group. So that's what makes me more comfortable with it, is it's not like, you know, we've created ten basketball courts and then there's that one tiny little, you know, wooded area. It really has been a priority of this group. And so I think that's a really important thing when we say our job is to balance all of the interests. And, you know, speaking to that open space and making sure it's maintained well, um, and, and accessible to people, accessible to people. Um, I think my observation, because I wasn't a part of this group, I can't take credit for any of it, it's impressive. It really is impressive what Orono Parks has done. Um, and again, as a thirty year resident who didn't pay attention because I was just too busy taking my kids to, you know, school and doing that stuff. Um, you know, so I, I do think we've, we've done a good job of that. And I think it is equally important, right? It's not a, it's not an either or, it's a both and. It's both open space and that continuing to be a priority, and creating spaces where community, people can come together to be physically fit, to engage each other, and um, and, and visibly be a part of their, of this community rather than other communities. And I think that's, those are the driving forces really behind it. People from Orono are scattering to other places, um, because as a community, it's an unmet need, it's an unmet need. Um, and I, I personally suspect it's more than a few loud voices, but I think the survey will tell us that. And so we'll get the survey, and then I think we're going to have a lot more information to work from. Yeah, cool. Yeah, well, it's important to bring it up now, right? Because you're right, if we wait until way down the line and we don't put it out there for open public debate, big mistake.
That's right. I do think that the, just on what you just said with um, a place to gather and actually have community in Orono, it's so rare. And a golf course is becoming a place like that, with the Christmas tree lighting and the sledding and the skiing and the ice skating. And it's actually becoming a place where people can see other members of the community. And so I, I mean, I know I'm going to take my kids out there this winter, you know, and so I guess, I don't know, there's just not that many. There's just not that many places.
It's surprising, because again, with that athletic center, it's, I don't know how it isn't done all the time.
The community, you know why it's empty? Because I've heard from the Orono pickleball players, uh, when they go there, they're like, no, these aren't your hours. No, you can't play here now. And it's very, it's very put offish to the pickleball community.
Well, and it's, I've come there twice with my son, and we haven't been able to get time, so.
Yeah, no.
It's not a city, it's not a city asset.
No, it's not, but it's.
You had to have a membership, right?
Well, you do, you do, but the hours are very, very limited. And, and, and the same is true at West Tonka, where, you know, those facilities are also supporting the schools.
Yeah.
Um, they have, they have, like what we're talking about, they have to balance the needs to say, this time is for basketball, this time is open gym, this time is pickleball. Um, and I was surprised because I play at West Tonka. Um, and I was recently talking with some folks, and they were, they were pretty up in arms about how they were treated at that facility because it is not.
Over the rest of the street here.
The, the Orono community, it's not, it is not bringing it to that community.
I mean, it's really unfortunate, because I don't know, well, you've been around long enough, I don't know how long everyone's lived here, but I fully recall when the plans for that were around and about, and we, you know, everybody wanted to support it because it was a big initiative, tons of money.
Yep.
And it was built as a.
Yes, so.
But we're also, and we're also not hearing the, the basketball player side of the story going, yeah, we go there, it's all pickleball.
Right, right, right.
It's just, it's just one facility, they've limited space.
Yeah, it's unfortunate that they could all walk together in that way, because again, it's a multi, it was a lot of money, and it was built as a community center, and thought, well, wow, and there was pushback for that at the time. It's like, well, there's safety for children to consider, we have people from the outside community coming in. That was absolutely meant to be sticks, if you will, of bringing people together, and now we're seeing, so it's just.
The Orono players are coming to Mount West Tonka to play indoors.
But it's different to the feeling of a community park versus being in a building with booked time on it.
I agree.
It's so different, it's like, you have a lot more opportunity to interact with other people who might be doing something else. You know, and you're just there at the same time. It's like, it reminds me, back when I was um, working in Minneapolis and working with the park board, doing the, the new facility in Theodore Park, I don't know if you guys have been there, you know, with a lot of foundation. That is so great, because you might go there to ski, and you're going to run into somebody else who's fat, tired biking, and you're going to run into someone else who's just coming in to get like a cup of hot cocoa. And it feels very neighborly, and it feels like a community of, you know, people who are kind of active and involved. And you're having those chance encounters, I mean, I've, I've scheduled meetings there just because, you know, it's just a fun place to be, and so it's just a different feeling. And I think having an open space where there's also like a lot of different overlapping activities builds community. Because you're interacting with people, you know, in ways that aren't so homogenous, you know, like we have scheduled time. So, I don't know, I, I love what's happening at the golf course, I think it's great for the community. So I, I mean, I, I, and at the same time, I think I'm a huge and committed proponent to open and deep public engagement. So if there's, you know, and, and I think that's what's happening with the survey, and it, and it won't be the last thing. It's, there's going to be much bigger, broader communication and input. If, if the feasibility demonstrates that the site could be feasible, then, you know, there's going to be more meetings, there's going to be more public input and ultimately decision making. But it's, you know, I know we're going to.
Good conversation, great conversation.
Yeah, it's important to debate.
Anything else before we adjourn?
I want to add that what was presented last night.
Thank you.
You were at last meeting, correct?
I was.
So then you were very personal, so. Rick was not, Rick Carter, if you want to send it to you. He goes out in a pack of before he has.
Oh, he was in the pack?
But I will email it to.
Oh, yeah. If it's in pack, you don't worry about it.
But then she has it.
Uh, did the, did the, the audio get fixed?
Yes.
That was terrible.
Funny, yeah, that was a little awkward laughing.
Was the microphone just off, does that listen?
I don't know what happened, it was a big issue, I have an A P key.
Right, yeah. Well, well done.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good to see you. Good to see you, and I have a friend's call. Did you want to talk, you and Sandy want to say anymore?
Sandy is out the door, so.
I have a, I have a little grab for twelve minutes. Thanks, Josh.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
Yeah, see ya. Hey, thank you for that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That was a good discussion.